Welcome everyone to the December 21st, 2016 School Committee Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. It's 6:30. First item in the business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone would stand.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to reply to United States America to our public statements, one nation, one God, and the visible, equitable, and justice for all.
Next item is Public Comment. Now, we have two public hearings that are going to happen tonight. The first in regard to the FY '18 budget. The second is in regard to school start times. If individuals want to have comment in regard to those public hearings, they can do that during those public hearings. They don't need to sign up in advance for public comment. And I believe Linda Ryan, you're wanting to discuss the school start time, so we'll just have you speak at that time. That being the case, unless someone missed the signup sheet, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is opening the public hearing on the FY '18 budget. Mr. Fund?
The FY '18 budget is a 2.18 increase to the current budget. The budget drivers that we refer to, first of all contractual obligations that were settled last year to carry over to this year. Transportation costs, which are increasing every year. And one of the things in the transportation costs this year is the cost of an additional bus due to the late starting times. And the state mandates such as McKinney-Vento homeless transportation. So these are the drivers that are more or less increasing the budget. But I will -- when we talk about a budget, this is a level service budget. That means that there are no reductions in the courses that any of your children have. There are no reduction in many of the extracurricular activities, no reduction in academic programs, no reduction in athletics, no -- this is one of the few school systems that has no bus fees, no athletic fees, no fees at all. No fee -- this is a new one. No fee for before-school care. One of the items when we decided to -- and there's a public hearing on it again tonight. The start times, it impacted people because they had to go to work and they needed someplace to leave their children, so we started a before-school care, and there is going to be no charge for that. So the goal in this particular budget was to stabilize transportation. As I said at the beginning of my presentation, this particular transportation is -- tends to increase every year in all of the districts. A total increase of the budget, including the addition of another bus, is 8.54 for regular day and 4.94 total increase in all the transportation. Other cities and towns can go up as much as 15% to 25%. One of the things that we were able to do is to keep -- to keep and develop programs within the district to reduce special ed out-of-district costs. They can be very costly because it's not only the cost of the out-of-district school, but it's also the out-of-district transportation. Remember, that's someone going from Nashby to Braintree or wherever the school is. I want to talk about sources of revenue so that everyone -- this is a little lesson on how we get our revenue. Chapter 70 is state aid. We have to use FY '17. Now, I will assume that the governor will not cut Chapter 70. They usually don't cut Chapter 70. The town of Nashby -- I'm sorry. Chapter 70 is $4,493,526. The town of Nashby, the request tonight, this is the public hearing, is $16,801,857. That comes from you, the taxpayers. Federal grants, FY '17. Again, I'm basing it on '17. It has to be based on '17 because we won't know until the federal grants come out in August, July and August, and the state grants will come out the end of June, which grants are going to be kept. Now, the federal grants, I'm basing that they're going to be level funded, so I use FY '17. I have federal grants, $780,805. I have state grants, FY '17, $105,797. Circuit breaker, I base it on FY '17 because that's what we're going to be expending in '18. We always spend in arrears. So what we accumulate for circuit breaker this year, we will use to offset our out-of-district costs, the student out-of-district costs for special education. The circuit breaker is earmarked strictly for special education. School choice money, and this is an estimate, again based on FY '17, $360,000. So that gives us, again, I take the choice money because we don't know what we're going to get from one year to the next, and if we use that to basically -- for our infrastructure, for our Chromebooks that your children get, that money, I usually base it, again, in arrears. So what we get this year, the $360,000, I'll use next year. Hopefully, we'll have choice students here, and we'll get $360,000 to carry over into the FY '19. So that's always in arrears. Federal and state grant. I wanted to show you this because I don't know what we -- you know, we just had an election, and I don't know what's going to happen at the federal level. Back in FY '14, Nashby received $1,051,473 in federal and state grants. In FY '15, we received $936,827 federal state grants, and FY '16, $924,759 federal and state grants, and FY '17, $780,805. That's a reduction from 2014 to 2017 of over a quarter of a million dollars, $270,668. So you can see what the trend is. The trend is we're getting less and less every year from the state, other than the Chapter 70. Remember the Chapter 70 money, that $4 million, and I level funded that because I know the governor will not reduce that. The FY '18 budget, you have contractual obligations of $511,388. And we had a reduction in this budget of, on the expense side, of $57,561. So the total budget increase is $453,827. In the contractual obligations, 85 percent, roughly 80 to 85 percent of the budget is made up of salaries. So that's your biggest portion of the budget. And we show in this particular budget an increase of 3.1 percent. On the expense side, which are your expenses, which are your transportation, your special ed out-of-districts, that had a reduction of 1.33 percent. Now, part of this 3.1 percent increase in the salary side is a result of an IRS audit that the town went through this past year. And some of the things that were being paid on the expense side should have been being paid on the salary side. So we had to transfer that money from one side of the budget to the other side of the budget, from the expense side of the budget to the salary side of the budget. So in reality, we had an increase of 2.29 on the salary side. If we hadn't moved those, we would have had a 2.29 percent increase on the salary side. So the 3.1 is partially driven because of those particular obligations that we had to do to make it a 2.18 percent increase in the budget. The FY '18 budget, this is just a breakdown of where the expenditures come from, and as you can see, other than the other in transportation out-of-district, it's all earmarked for education. In FY '18, the potential initiatives, as we did last summer, we had Camp Falcon, which was run during the summer for reinforcement. Changes in school start times, that's on the agenda tonight. Before and after school programs for elementary schools, which will continue, no reduction. We are continuing the Chromebook initiatives. We are continuing to improve our infrastructure as far as switches and other needed things to run the Chromebooks, to be honest with you. And an up-to-date sound system. We're looking at updating the sound system at the high school. It's -- I believe the high school is now almost 20 years old, and that was the original system. So I will entertain from the committee or the public any questions.
Oh, in the initial discussion there, you indicated that you had included in the budget, or proposed budget already, before-school start programs. Is that correct?
Yes, we did. Well --
So is that the same as the third item on that list?
That is correct. That's the before-school program that I had talked about earlier, that there would be no charge for. Now, this budget was completed before we determined that we were going to have that program. So that program will be funded through choice funds. The budget had already been completed, the 2.18, but that would be -- we will fund that.
Okay. So the budget that you proposed does not include that?
No, it does not.
Okay. I thought you said it did, so.
Well, I also included all of the revenue that we get, and you know, that's basically as the infrastructure and the auditorium. We would not be able to do these things without school choice funds. When you only have, you know, we're reducing the expense side of the budget by 1.33 percent. If we're reducing it there, you know, the sound system, the soundboard, I know is going to be rather expensive at the high school, but it does have to be upgraded. So these things do come out of choice. Other questions?
Another question on the grant. So as you noted, there's been a reduction in grants over the last four or five years. So has that been mostly due to the fact that the grants are not available or that we're applying and not getting?
The competitive grants from years ago are pretty much not around anymore. These are all what they call entitlement grants. In other words, all the districts get them. This is part of No Child Left Behind. You've probably heard that before. Title I is one of them. The 240 Grant, which is the IDEA, those are the two big grants. Those two grants are still in, but get reduced every year. You know, they take a little bit each year. And I just wanted to show from '14 to '17 the reductions in that.
In regard to the transportation costs, I know over the last several years, that's been favorable for us. So is the increase directly related to adding the additional bus? Or is there also an increase in the operating costs in where we at as far as our contract with the provider?
The increase is in the labor. The increase in the cost of the buses. First of all, we're kind of a unique situation. The buses that you see, the big yellow buses, they are owned by the town of -- they're owned by Nashby and can only be used by Nashby, as you see on the side of the bus. But the collaborative is our contractor. We kind of sit down and we break down the labor costs, we break down the benefits, we break down as far as cost of fuel. I have cost of maintenance on each of those buses, and I also have what they call a reserve because the maintenance is your day-to-day maintenance as far as changing the oil, tires, and so forth. But there's also a reserve account if a transmission goes or something in the engine goes, that reserve account picks up that difference. So we have been fortunate because we can control our costs because we are part of the collaborative. So it's not like it's a private company that comes in and bids, and you don't get to see how they determine their costs. I see how they determine their costs, and I can question anything that I don't find that is -- that I feel is fair to Nashby. I can bring that up. So we do have a unique situation. We are the only ones on the Cape that do the big yellow buses through the Cape Cod Collaborative. There are other communities that are now looking at it as a cost savings because our increase is not going up as rapidly as some of these other communities. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
One second. All right. It's a little before the scheduled time for the public hearing on the school start time, so let's move on, and we'll come back to that at 7:05 in case people were planning to show up for that. Approval of minutes for December 28 through December 7. All right. Don't move.
They're in here, but their tour's are back.
Can we please make sure to approve separately what you're saying tonight?
Motion to approve the -- Second.
Any discussion? Are there any? All in favor?
Aye. Deb stand?
Yes.
Yes. Your board, one of the -- We have a motion for the December 7.
Don't move.
And the second?
Second.
Any discussion? Herrington, Scott, have you got it?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next item, we'll go ahead and start on the report of the business manager on the FY '17 budget.
FY '17 budget, we're moving along. Things look pretty good. I have -- do have a few transfers. We finally did use all of our, as I had mentioned in my presentation about the circuit breaker. The monies that we received last year in circuit break, I believe it was approximately $466,000. We have backed out all of those bills, so now I will be asking the transfers to kind of straighten those accounts out because we back out the 466 as the bills come in, so it's not a true deflection on the line items. There are really, again, the principals are budget-conscious. I can tell you that you watch their budgets. One of the things that I didn't, I failed to mention in the budget presentation is McKinney-Vento, which is our transportation of homeless students. This particular line item, we're watching very, very carefully. Last year, we budgeted, I believe, $52,000. We end up expending $82,000, and I meant to mention that in '18. I did budget $62,000. But that's a, you know, people ask me, well, how do you determine I had a budget for these children that become homeless and actually live in a different town and want to go to Nashby? It's like I just take past years and try to do the best I can in estimating. So unless there are any questions on the budget, I'll move on to the grants and revolving Grant funding, all the grants have been approved. As you have in front of you, we have Title I, Title II. You can see the total revenues and the total expenses. The Perkins Grant, everything seems to be on the plus side. Again, they have all been approved. And again, these are entitlements. These are not competitive, other than the Perkins Grant. The Perkins Grant is a competitive grant. Mr. Looney got that grant for the high school. Other than that, the other grants are all entitlement grants, which means that you're given a figure, and that's what you're going to get from the federal government or the state government. Now, I noticed the anti-addiction grant program, I believe that was a 9C cut from the governor. A 9C cut, since I have an audience tonight, a 9C cut is the governor has a right to cut not only education, but he can cut anything out of the budget because you have to remember the state budget is based on revenues, monthly revenues, and if they don't meet those monthly revenues, naturally, they can't send the money out to the cities and towns. So one of the grants that I believe he's cut is that anti-addiction grant as one of his 9C cuts. And that's it on the grants. Revolving accounts, athletics, gate receipts and receipts from water sales and at the high school, the lost book accounts, there were no change, preschool accounts. The preschool, I want to address the preschool a little bit. The preschool revolving account, one of the things we did when we put in all-day, the all-day preschool is we never really budgeted anything for it, and there's some items that the principal, Mr. LaBelle, wanted to put in, and one of the, in his budget was getting tight. So I said, well, we do have a preschool account, but these particular things have to be used in the preschool, so that's why that, the purchase of supplies there. Facilities rental, basically, the town has control of that. School choice, you'll also see in your packet that I gave you a complete list of how all the choice money has been spent up to, I believe, the end of November. So that's later on if you have some questions on that. The Cape Cod Five Grants, these grants that teachers get from time to time, media access, we do have a small amount there. Career to school, we just got, we received some additional funds in that grant, and that goes to the high school, and we have a donation account. I have a couple of transfers, and this is to clean up the tuition accounts, and there was one on professional leadership account that I needed to transfer. From the tuition accounts, the tuition, a member of collaborative, $174,835, and that's going to the tuition for mass public schools, $20,380, and tuition for private schools, $154,455 to tuition of special ed private schools. And this is just to clear up the negative amounts in those particular line items. The same thing with the professional development, decreased amount from the professional development assistance superintendent for $1,225, going to professional development for leadership, $1,225.
I move to accept the budget transfer 17-04 as presented.
Any further discussion? Herrington, Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Who knows? I must agree.
Also in your packet, you have a list going back to 7-1, which is the beginning of this fiscal year, and it goes, I believe, right up until, well, up until 12-8. You have in there the receipts, those are the receipts that we have received so far. We have not received any additional receipts as of today. And all of the expenditures. And if anyone has any, I'll try to answer the questions as far as the technical stuff. I can tell you, I kind of put over there what it was. I went over with the director of technology. I'm not an expert in switches and integration and configuration. But you can see that a lot of it is software. And the reason why I use the choice for this because it varies, if you notice Renaissance Learning, it varies from school to school. So it's something that every school uses, and so I tend to take those things out, and it helps to relieve the school budgets. So a lot of it is software. And the same thing with, there is some other software down there too. The math, the quantum learning is software. And then arcas are those touchscreen TVs that you just saw me using here. So if you have a question, other than technical, I can probably tell you what it was used for. I did put it in the description.
Paul, just for my identification, maybe for others, the general purpose for which school choice funds may be used for and our philosophy in regard to use of those?
The, it's a very, very, as the Department of Education will attest to this, that it's a very gray area. You cannot use it for transportation or any construction. In other words, we can't replace windows. But we can do it, we can use it for the infrastructure in the building, the technology infrastructure, the configuration, the switches, which are going to take place in this building on Tuesday. We can use it for purchasing the Chromebooks. I tend to look at items that are going to affect every student. Infrastructure is going to, every, now every student has a Chromebook. If we can upgrade our infrastructure so that the Chromebooks work better, then that's reaching every student. The software such as Renaissance, and I'm just picking out examples, Renaissance Learning, Camp Falcon reaches every kid for reinforcement over the summer. Trying to look at, Fun and Functions, this is a new one. This was one of Mr. LaBelle's ideas of a sensory, and again, this is a sensory room at the Coombs to help -- at the Coombs to help some of our students with issues. So I always look at the choice money that it goes directly to the students, it's not purchasing windows or construction or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we've, I think we've talked about this before, about getting some kind of formalized understanding amongst ourselves about if there's going to be a ceiling for expenditures that are going to be brought to the committee either for approval or for at least, you know, a heads up. And I had spoken to the superintendent before about the Tropec speed laser, you know, which was a very specific piece of equipment for the high school for $24,000. And me personally would have liked to have someone come and say why we're spending $25,000 on a laser grabber, to say what it is, why we're getting it, and how it's going to benefit the entire district.
Well, you can have a presentation, I know.
And it doesn't need a presentation, it's somebody who's going, somebody who's presented you that I want to spend 25 grand on a laser grabber, so I think that information you could trickle off before we have to sign it down. We'll trickle sideways or whatever.
And, you know, I, you know, by doing this, I wanted to show you what the, especially, the key to this is, the thing that I want to show, is what the balance is now, what the basic revenue for this district, which is $128,340, and that comes in on a monthly basis. So, you know, we, you know, the person in that particular department came in and did justify it to the superintendent and myself, but if there's going to be a ceiling or something that big, I don't mind. The other stuff is, you know, if you look at the WBA simple, the Camp Falcon and some more smaller.
I don't have any issue with any of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
And I'm pretty sure I don't have a problem with a speed laser either.
No, no, I think, I think what we have, I kind of get the gist of it.
I think we have to spend, we have to buy a air system for it as well, just above and below.
I don't remember that.
So Jeff, would a report like this on a monthly basis?
Well, I mean, it needs to be proactive. This warrant's already been signed, so I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's necessary for Paul to come to the committee with a $30 bill from the WBA, or a $5 screwball from the county.
I think, if I may, referring back to, I think what Jeff is pointing to is something out of the pipeline, not the software that I bought for the school for Renaissance or the quantum learning, which is the symphony math that they wanted. A lot of these things, you know, happen between school committee meetings, and I try to expedite them for all the principal. I think unique things such as the BoJack speed laser, I think we'd have to kind of pick those, pick and choose what we need. And I think I understand what you're going to do.
And, you know, I find.
It's not something that we need tomorrow.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sure we could have waited two weeks.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. A lot of the other things, you know, like the software I like to give, often run students. So this is just your information, I don't mind doing this on a monthly basis because it's already in the computer, it's just updating it each month and showing you the revenue coming in and where we're extending it.
Yeah, I would appreciate.
Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments on that?
This goes back a bit. When we, you, I, at the very first window meeting, where we, we divided down with the funds for the original vote, and at that point in time, if I remember correctly, I wrote an email to, to you, is that these funds do not have to be approved by the school committee, this expenditure does not have to be approved by the school.
The choice money does not have to be expended, it does not have to be approved by the school. That's an extra. But I understand, Mr. LaBelle, this kind of.
So I think the bottom line is proactive awareness of what you need.
Jeff.
About in schools, if we come up with a situation, say, again, you don't assume that it's being approved by the school committee or by the superintendent?
We did it, we did it. $500,000, we discussed that in committee in the pool.
The $500,000 is the original, the original amount, which was the, I want to say $50,000, yeah, $50,000 is the original amount that was transferred.
We approved it.
It was approved, it doesn't get tricked, I want you to understand this, a little, just a little lesson.
Please.
You cannot transfer funds out of the school budget, once the school budget is voted by the town, the bottom line is the bottom line. So the $50,000, we had in common that was carried over from FY16 into FY17, we have that in common. In fact, we brought the first bill against that $50,000, and it's $35,000, they have completed it. And then what happens is the OPM, which is the representative for the schools, the town, which is, the town, the community, the approval comes to me, I approve it, and we didn't take it in our, carry it over, it's in common, it's in the, the, as far as the $500,000, it's in that, it's in that, it's in that.
I'm going to pass, hold off on item 8.5 in regard to substitute, any discussion, but we can go ahead and open our public hearing in regard to the school start times, it's Call the public hearing to order. Mrs. LeWort, read your presentation on this.
So.
Any discussion?
An opportunity for further discussion on the recommendation from the school start time committee, moving forward with a plan for a later start time at Mashpee Middle High School. The current proposal that the committee, the school start time committee came up with was an 8:00 start for the Mashpee Middle High School, and that the elementary schools would have a later start time as well, with a 9 o'clock start time for Quashnet, a 9:05 for the Coombs School. I want to give credit to Mrs. Loyco, who has been riding many buses and looking at routes to jet, and working with the Cape Cod Collaborative to make sure that we are able to facilitate bus runs in the time that we've allowed. So what happened was, is that the morning runs are fine, in fact, most of them are at about a 30, 35 minute, but the glitch came when she looked at the afternoon, because we have the high school ending with the proposal at 3:00 PM, and the elementary school's basically ending at 3:30, which is too tight of a window. So based on her input in the collaborative, the, what we would, be a final recommendation to the school committee would be an 8:25 start time at the Mashpee Middle High School, moving it up by five minutes, and moving the elementary down by five for a 9:05 and a 9:10, and that gives the time we need in the afternoon to complete the bus runs.
So the new end times will be?
New end times would be for the Quashnet School, it would be, I believe, 3:35 and 3:40 for the Coombs School, and the high school would end at 2:55. So that would give us enough time for those afternoon bus runs. We have looked at consolidating some of the stops, which we hope to put it to, you know, communicate them and work through those this year prior to the start, if it's approved for a next year's start. And again, I think I said at the last meeting, I really want to thank the volunteers who served on the school start time committee. We met from November of last year, pretty much on a monthly basis, and really looked at the research, keeping in mind that the decision for me is all about what's best for our adolescent learners, and based on the research, a later start time is beneficial for their brains and their development and their decision making. So that is where we're at tonight, we're hopeful that, anyone who would like to contribute to the conversation is welcome to come, to come forward, and I think we've said for the last probably two months, I've received emails and responded to people, I don't know how many emails the school committee has received, but we are definitely open to hearing everyone's input. This is a community decision, keeping in mind that we hope that we are doing what's best for our students.
All right, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, we do want public comment. Linda, I know that you have signed up, if there's others who want to comment after, Linda, just form a line and we will recognize you. So Linda, if you'll come to the microphone.
Hi, excuse me, Linda Ryan, 44 Burning Bush Road, Mashpee, Mass. I am in favor for the older students to start, but I'm not for the younger children. My five-year-old grandson, who spends most of his time in our home, we're a blended family, is up by 6:15, 6:30 in the morning. He's off to a daycare by 7:15, 7:20. My concerns are mostly related to the bus, he's in our preschool program this year, he'll be in our kindergarten program next year. It's not the morning so much for us, it's the afternoon drop-off for our family, and I'm sure there's many other families out there. Today I heard a rumor that there's a possibility that all bus stops will be brought to the front of developments, which gives me grave concern to have my five-year-old out there, which also puts my family in a situation that we will have to hire somebody to pick him up and get him, or our daycare provider will have to load her van up with all of her daycare students and go up to the bus stop. And I just have concerns and worries about that, and I'm asking if Kathy, who has done a fantastic job in the future, and I'm sure she is, to really look at our bus stops that cannot, don't have to be at the front of a development. I particularly live off of Route 130, we all know, driving this community, it's a crazy street, and having five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds out there, there's approximately 15 children in the development that I live in that are on the Casey Coombs, Quashnet bus, that's 15 cars at the front of our development every morning. I just have concerns and worries about that. We, as a family, if the school committee decides that it should be an earlier start time, we'll work with it, but I really hope that you'll take into consideration our bus stops and the safety of our children at the bus stops. I also wanted to ask, earlier it was brought up that we'll have free daycare in the morning, is that daycare going to be, able to be used as needed, or is it, you have to sign up and it's something that you're registered for and you have to use it on an everyday basis, or can it be, depending on a family's work schedule, if it changes and they need Tuesday, Thursday, all of a sudden?
So the before-school program will be connected with the rec department program, will be supporting them, and yes, you can change, we would, we just are not looking for drop-ins on a morning where they're not expected, but if you're one week that, it's five days a week, and you know the next week it's two days, we just need to know sort of a schedule. But you can choose all five, one day a week, however that goes, and obviously, I believe there should be flexibility, but we would need, we're just not looking for last-minute people who just decide, I'm going to go someplace, I need to drop my child here. We need a little bit of a structure for safety in terms of my perspective.
Speaking of structure, who, it will be our rec department, which is all licensed, certified?
It will be under the license program of Mary Bradbury, absolutely.
So basically, it's the busing that I have a real concern with. Also, as a paraprofessional and a monitor for our town, busing can be very dangerous, and putting children at that age, which now we go into developments, out there is a grave concern to me. And we're putting more traffic out there by putting more cars in the front of developments, people trying to leave to go to work, people trying to come into the development. I have a lot of concerns about it, so I know your expertise, and I'm hoping that you'll really look at it. All righty, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Go ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
Sarah McKenzie, and I have two daughters in the Mashpee schools, one who, at this point in time, is in grade nine at the high school, and another one who's in grade four here at Quashnet. I'm a big believer in this initiative, and I'm very proud of the Mashpee school system for undertaking this initiative. It is five years now that we've been in Massachusetts, and specifically in Mashpee. I've experienced all the schools so far in these five years, and in the five years that we've been here, I've seen a number of changes that I think have really contributed to making the Mashpee school system a really great school system, and even better than it was when I first arrived. And I think this is one of those things that could make it even that much better. And I find that the fact that the Mashpee school system is considering this, I think shows that they have a real sense of understanding, passion, and caring for our kids and for the students. I think it's, it's well-known that young people today, especially teens, are under a significant amount of pressure compared to what we experienced growing up. And some of those things can't be changed, they're the result of contemporary society. But some of those things, we do have the power to either improve upon or change, and this is one of those things that I think we have the power to at least improve upon. And all the research shows that this is in the best interest of especially teenagers in terms of their health, their well-being, their focus, and performance in school, and things they do after school. I've certainly, as a parent, I've dealt with stress and anxiety in one of my children, and, and the challenges that have arisen because of that, and school start time has, is one of the factors that's contributed to that, and if you talk to any healthcare professional, or a guidance counselor, a teacher, they'll tell you that they're seeing more and more stress and anxiety in young people today. And I think if we can do one thing to help minimize that, then we would be, you know, we should be proud of ourselves, and especially when it's, it's only an hour later. Ultimately, the research shows that 10:00 AM would be best, but, you know, that's kind of crazy for most of us in this world. And of course, change isn't easy, we all know that, we've all had to experience different change in our lives, but sooner or later, it becomes the new norm. And at first, it will be rocky, I imagine, and things that need to be tweaked, like bus schedules, and I know for some families, it might be more challenging than for others, especially if they have younger kids, but I do think that if you really want something to work, you find a solution, and that, you know, that can make it work. And so it's something I really hope to see happen, and I just thank all of you for even considering this, I think it's really amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk? Please come to the microphone. The gentleman first, he raised his hand, sorry.
My name is Derek Saffron, I got two kids, one in Casey Coombs, one in Quashnet here. My concern was, is there any plan for the kids going into middle school? Because my oldest will be going into seventh grade, and being a parent, I'm concerned of his safety if I'm leaving the house and he's home alone waiting for the school bus, and him getting out of the house. I don't know if anything's been looked at as far as the middle school goes, or anything before school, at the middle school? before school, at the middle school?
No, I think the general thoughts were that in the morning that those children are capable of getting themselves on the bus. I don't know what he does af, he or she does after school. So there, currently, there is no plan to provide a before-school care at the middle high school.
After-school wise, they actually both go to Kids Club after-school at the cafeteria. He will be getting into sports probably once he gets into the middle school. But I do have concern for my child being home alone with both parents working, and he's going to have to get out of the house on his own and get to the bus stop and wait there by himself in our neighborhood. I'm not sure if something could be looked at. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha Zeal, and I have three children in the school system. Currently, both of my younger sons are at the Casey Coombs, and I have an eighth grader at the middle high school. So next year, I will have three children in three different buildings. So I have, I do understand, I teach as well on Cape, so I do work with middle school, so I'm completely aware of school start times. And actually, my district hasn't really started this discussion quite yet. We're in the process of looking at maybe restructuring where our grade levels go. So that seems to be our priority. But in regards to my children, my first concern is with my younger kids. The daycare sounds great, and when you look on the video that has been produced, and it did specifically say on the video that the daycare would be provided for a certain amount of time, well, my one child is kindergarten, my other child is third grade. So I don't know what that definition of a certain amount of time in my mind, I'm going to need a daycare because my school starts way earlier than your school system. So I'm going to need a place for my children to go in order for me to go to school. And a certain time is going to be, I have a kindergartner, it's going to be five or six years. So that is my concern. First is morning care. Also, with that morning care, like, I understand that moving it later will give them more sleep, but in reality, one hour actually creates a two-hour longer day for the younger kids, because they're going to need that morning care. They're going to have to get up. So theoretically, I myself have to be at school at 7:40. I would have to drop my younger kids off at a daycare at 7:00, so that's extending their school day an hour and 45 minutes longer in the morning. And as a parent and a teacher, I think it would be more beneficial for the younger students to get to school, get into that educational setting, and have an after-care program afterwards, so they could do their homework then. So in regards to the younger kids, I would be more in favor of having them start younger because I think, well, at an earlier time, because I think they're more productive at an earlier time. And plus, I'm just worried about, so if they're in daycare for an hour and 45 minutes, how are they going to be at the start of school? Are they going to be tired and lethargic because they've had that before morning? And now instead of an eight-hour school day, it could be perhaps with the daycare a nine-hour? It's just longer for the younger students. In regards to my high school student, I get, I mean, he sleeps all the time, so I understand the later school start. I totally get that. But he's also an athlete. And that's my major concern, because being a South Shore League, you know, part of the South Shore League, we have one school system that we play on Cape. Everything else is travel. So when you skew this time, we have an hour later school, school start, then we have an hour later starting athletics, and then we have the travel time. And now the kids are getting out early to go to some of the locations, we're losing time on learning. So if they're just missing one class to travel now with the current times, now we push it back, they're going to be missing more time on learning. And I'm just trying to think, so now it's later in the day, the travel time is still an hour or more, and now they're getting home, instead of 7:30 at night, they're getting home at 8:30 at night. And then they still have to shower and do their homework. So it just skews everything. I don't think that the more sleep is coming out of one hour, I just think that there's more issues. So I do like the idea that it's later for high school, but at the same time with the extracurricular activities, that really concerns me, because I just think it's pushing everybody's evening much later. And then with the younger kids, again, that concerns me, because by the time they get to school, they're going to be tired from that morning care and running around with that. And I think just going, it's just a longer time. And I do, I echo what the gentleman just said before. He's going to be in ninth grade, and I'm going to be in school by the time he has to get on the bus. I hope that he would get off his phone or Playstation so he can get to the bus stop to get to school on time. Because who's going to ensure? Now, I know he's going on the bus, I drop him off at school every day because it's on my way to school. But a 13-year-old boy without someone in the house saying, "Look, you got to go to school, get there." I mean, athletics is a great motivation because he's got to be in school and he has to have that attendance in order to play. But there's off-seasons, I understand, like, what are they going to do? Where are they going to be? And we are on a busy place for them to be picked up, and there's a lot of concerns with that. There's a lot of unsupervision. And I'm sorry, 13, 14-year-old boys, they're not responsible enough to get themselves up and out the door to go to school. So I think that there's a lot of things that still need to be considered and looked at. I think a lot of people still need to be heard. I think that we should all have a say. This is a connected community. I think as a community, we should have a vote. We should have more input. See what we think about the new proposed times, because you did have three different sets of times in the beginning, but now we have all this research, and now we've done all this. You did a before, and now I think we should have an after. You see, after you've done all your research, what do we think now? How do we think it will impact the families now that we have everything up on the table? I just think that there's still a lot of things that need to be considered, and I still think a lot of people have a voice to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my concern.
Thank you.
Do you want to address a couple of those, and then we want Mr. Taveri to also?
Yes, we could invite Mr. Taveri up. So I, I wonder, Samantha, when you talked about the before-school reference about being free for a certain amount of time, is that what you were talking about?
For the younger kids or for the older kids?
For the younger kids. When you-
For the younger kids, so-
In the presentation, you said that in our video or our-
Right, you had a video that you put out that was on YouTube and it's all over the Internet.
Yep.
And, I mean, it was greatly done, but it did say specifically, we will offer daycare for those families in need for a certain amount of time. I mean, there, it's in the clause, I mean, we can pull it up.
So the intent is that, and we've estimated to be about a $20,000 expense, that that would be something that we would carry forward for multiple, as many years as we need to, based on adding additional staffing to Mary Bradbury's program. And I don't know if it's said anywhere, I believe it does, but the current plan is that it would open at 7:00 in the morning, and the kids would get to their school, whether it's 9:05, 9:10, between the two schools.
Okay. Does that answer your question on that?
That, it sounds like it's indefinite now, but we know how much has changed.
All right. And then you had some concerns in regard to extracurricular activities, and ask Mr. Taveri to, who has our A.D. to talk about, because-
So how do you foresee this with your sport program? Because, I mean, looking at the South Shore League, the only on Cape school that's in the league is Montmore.
Right.
Anywhere else is quite the try. This is Paul, Morewell, Tohasset, Randolph, Rockland, Abington, I mean, that's pretty far. And then you have your little, your middle school kids going to Nantucket and the Vineyards, and you know that, you, the kids have to get out early in order to travel. That's a lot of time on learning.
Right. Actually, Montmore's not in our league anymore, so we're, we know our Cape teams, but-
We're in Wikipedia, but-
So we're actually, in terms of game times, nothing's going to change. We have to abide by a league, we're in a league. We abide by their start time, so we're not going to start games later per se. What that does is we'll have some early release times. The ones that would be really challenging for us are the three that you just named, Paul, Tohasset, Abington, which are traditionally our longest trips. Those would probably be dismissals that we'd have to leave in the timeframe of right around 2:15, 2 o'clock. Otherwise, you're looking at 15-minute dismissals or 25-minute dismissals at the most. So in essence, they're not going to be coming home later, any later than games. The only difference that we would see is obviously the practice times will change. We'd have still afternoon practices. I think in a lot of ways, it's beneficial to have middle school move up an hour. The problem sometimes we face is we have kids that when they get out of middle school practice, their parents aren't home, so they can't take the late bus, or they have to wait for their parents. I think this way, actually, you're going to push kids home more. Most parents are getting home if you have one or two parents working house at 4:30, 5 o'clock. But it, but in reality, it's, there's not a lot of difference in the timeframe of games. It's more the practice, they're going to get moves up an hour. The only issue I think we foresee, the practices would be in the winter with, we have, basically we have one gym, or a multitude of teams, basketball teams. Otherwise, not a lot of changes for sports like hockey. Ice time gymnastics may have to be an evening start, depending upon where Falmouth goes. But we don't foresee a ton of practice time changes, other than that hour, that hour forward. Game times, like I said, they would not change. Early releases, I think down the road, we would look at something. When the, if the schedule gets moved, which we're looking at moving the schedule, there's ways to help that last block of the day, to keep time on learning and to get that early release time on occasion on a rotating block, I think it would be beneficial for everybody at the high school level and middle school level. I'm sure there's other athletic questions if you have. I got the mic in front of me, so go right ahead.
It kind of annoys me a little bit. No, I'm just concerned, because I, I know, my child is not the most responsible child. So I think he's not the most organized for sports, it's a big thing for him.
Can you come up to the table, so?
Sports is a big thing for him, so it does, it makes me nervous. I mean, is there going to be that academic support? Because like, in the district where I work, there's an hour, like, our practices can't start to a certain time because we have a built-in hour where they have extra help time. So athletes are suspected to go to that study hall time. So I'm just wondering, I mean, with a later start, it's just the days with the games and they get out early, and I can be like, I can see my son, you know these boys. Oh, I didn't have signs because I missed because I got on the bus. I just want to make sure there's that support in order to keep them, I mean, we're here for school first, athletics second. And I just want to keep them, him focused. And I'm sure I'm not the only mom that has these concerns.
Sure. And most of our kids use their time wisely, and even if it'd be a three, currently be a three-point basketball practice, there's an hour of that time, which you know, the teachers and I don't, you have a lot of time. Most of those kids use that time wisely. Otherwise, practice right after school, so then that time is on back end, we get home. If they have time and home, we got to work now. But we have, we have some structured academic times. The majority of our teams are right out after school. With the exception of winter, winter camps.
Yeah, winter, yeah.
Off-site or one gym, multiple practice times.
And I'm sure if I think of more specific contact, I'll let you know. As sure as the seasons change, because then daylight changes, a whole other thing. But thanks.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like the opportunity to speak? Want to, you have another question?
I'm actually, I'm a coach at Falmouth High School, too. I coach in the fall. And I know we've had concerns with backing the games up, too. And all the outdoor coaches actually are already running out of daylight, as it is with the changing times, because they've been looking at it, too. And soccer programs, because we do carry some freshman programs in Falmouth, they are running out of daylight. I don't know if you're having those issues here. But like, my son, like her son, I know is not going to get out of bed, and I'm going to struggle to get him to school. And he wants to play football, and he wants to play basketball. And I have those concerns, too. We're extending his day, and he already has trouble making it through the day. As it is, he's on an IEP here at school. My second child might be coming on an IEP at the school system. They have enough trouble making it through the day, and I wasn't thinking until she said, "I would have to have my kindergarten, my first grader now, here at 7:00 in the morning, and he'd be in aftercare until 5:30 due to my work schedule." That is a long day for a first grader. And then my high schooler, like I said, I have to, hopefully gets on the bus, makes your practices, gets all the schoolwork done, and the whole nine yards. I'm not sure, I think it's going to be a very tough thing as far as the competitive sport paths. And I don't know how late your football games go, but I know I had a game in Orleans this year, and I coached, and I'd get home at 9:30, 10:00, 11:00 in the morning. And we were still asking our kids to go home, do homework, you know, after they got off the bus, they got all their gear, and those are long nights, and that's not changing their sleep patterns, no.
No, I think down the road again, but a couple things. We would have problems around daylight, our start times, they'd be 4:00. ECL, the one difference is Marshall does a different travel time at times, and NOS doesn't leave until the big day requires you to stay until the end of the day. As we talked about as a committee, they think you got to have flexibility with the neighborhood. Teachers understand that, that kids are going to have to leave early, they're going to have to be coming in, you know, busy practice time, they got to work, and that's, our coaches understand that. Our coaches understand that, and our staff understand that already. That's never an issue, we understand, so. But that's really hasn't been an issue with daylight, because it's obviously an issue with sports. It's all particular, we follow, the bus queue, the time, the activity, it's been very strong in forty years. Again, the other piece, the built-in block time at the end, having some sort of academic launch, and you kind of have to get students talking about late nights, having to be able to do work in school, I think that they're going to push them a lot.
Yeah, when I coached at Bourne two seasons ago, they actually had a Richmond ran after school, where they would go to the mandatory study off of North Star practice till 3:00. And if we moved the times up and you had the school time later, I know that that block's not going to be there.
Right. I think the idea would be to have lots in the core of the schedule. That does a different discussion for the day of the schedule. That would be the idea, they would actually have to have their school, their run school, and it would benefit the kids right.
I know, Kids Club does an excellent job, they do, with the kids. My student does all of his homework at Kids Club, I'm very fortunate. That's about the only place I can get him to do it, because once he's home, he's checked out from the desk. Especially, he's playing basketball now, traveling basketball. And I do have those similar concerns when he gets to high school and playing basketball. It is going to be late nights, he's not going to have time to get his homework done. And I'm not going to be able to get him on the bus because he has those late nights, and he's not going to be able to get up anymore.
Thank you.
So this is specifically for you, but you're welcome to be here.
That's all right. I'll go back there, though.
Thanks for hearing me again. I moved here from somewhere where a regular high school start time was 9:00 AM. The earliest start time I was aware of was 8:45. Some of those high school start times were bumped to even later, based on the same research and development that's gone into this. All through high school, I started school at 9:00 in the morning, and we got out at 3:30. Did after-school sports, extracurricular activities, and were, you know, healthy, functioning families. And that's the schedule my girls came here from. So to us, the 8:15 start time at Quashnet was shockingly early. I was very surprised to discover middle school, high school was 7:30. And I don't have kids in Casey Coombs, so I can't express the same concerns that parents do who have kids that young. I'm just curious, was it never considered possible to just switch it?
We did look at switching it, some of the early feedback from parents who have, who want their older child home to receive their younger children, or their siblings. But also, when we looked at the buses, the younger students, elementary students, are not quite as efficient at the process of, you know, riding the bus in the morning, particularly the ride home. If a kindergarten parent is not home, that student has to come back to the school. And if they had to do their runs first and then get to the high school, it presented quite a few more problems in that respect. And also, we looked at in terms of, many of the surrounding elementary schools in other towns start at 9:00 currently. So I don't know how those families have adjusted to that with their work schedules, but they have. And also, in terms of, there's not a lot of research about a later start time or early start times with the younger children. start times with the younger children. But anecdotally, you can look at a school such as Hyannis West, who has quite a challenging school population. They start at 9:00 and they outscore our third graders on standardized tests. So, you know, whether sleep is tied to that or not, or other variables, there's always so many variables in a school day. But basically, we also looked at the surrounding towns where their elementary starts at 9:00.
So the other thing I was going to add is that obviously, sports are an important part of health and well-being. Emotional, mental, physical health and well-being is also, you know, integral to academic education and performance. And I don't think as important as sports are that they necessarily take precedent over decision-making regarding the academic piece, which is possibly more important, but I think altogether, it's like a holistic whole. And I can say that in the experience I've had with my older child, certainly running out of fuel by the end of the day from being tired, having eating habits challenged, that's a big one that's come up, certainly from some of the pediatricians that have been in attendance. And since she started middle school, that's something that I've witnessed, you know, not being hungry really early in the morning and then sort of a normal eating schedule for the day being off. And so by the end of the school day, not having enough fuel in terms of nutrition and/or energy to get through extracurricular activities at the end of the day. And I've seen her drop some of those as a result. Yeah. So I actually, in my case, having come from a healthier later start time to an earlier one, have seen negative effects on my children and the family as a result. So I'm speaking from personal experience because I've actually lived it. But again, I can't speak for people with younger kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nicole Chesley. I have two children in Mashpee. I have one in Quasnet and one in the middle school. I actually do teach in Hyannis, not at High West, but I teach at the other school. I teach second grade. Our school start time is actually 8:40 in Barnstable. It's not 9:00. My concern is we've talked so much about the adolescents and not enough about the little guys. I teach second grade. Our daycare opens at 7:00 in the morning in my school. Those kids are dropped off at 7:00 in the morning. They have to have breakfast at school because their parents don't have time to give them breakfast at home before they leave school. Right now, my son has a great situation. We have breakfast together in the morning. I pack, help him pack his backpack. I take him out to the bus stop. I sit at the bus stop and I make sure off to fourth grade, he goes to sleep and sound. School start time change, I'm going to rush around in the morning, whip the kid out of bed, throw breakfast at him in the car because I don't want him to have breakfast at school. He's probably not going to be hungry. He's probably not going to eat. And he's going to send to school for two hours before he even has to go to class. Right now, in my second grade class, the kids that go to daycare in the morning, half of them are falling asleep on the rug at the end of the day. They're exhausted. They're ready to learn. They get up early. They're ready to learn first thing in the morning. And I understand the research. I've studied the research. I've gone to school for education. I took all the psychology classes you could ever take. I get the research about adolescents. My concern is those young children. I don't think that we've thought this through on the side of the Casey Coombs and Quasnet students. To piggyback on a couple of them, I'm concerned about my 12-year-old son putting himself on the bus in the morning. He's got that great cell phone, but do you think he's going to look at the clock in the morning to see when the bus is coming? Absolutely not. That kid's going to be doo, 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 doo with his friends all morning long, not to mention the fact that those little kids, that bus comes right by your house. So if they're not aware of the time, they can see the bus in front of their house, they'll run out the door to the bus. It's the bus. You have to walk all the way out of my neighborhood to get the bus for the high school students. There's no, you know, uh-oh, there's the bus in front of the house, I better get out the door. Before you know it's 10:00 in the morning, I'm getting a phone call from the school and my son hasn't gone to school today. We're both at work. We can't take him. So I'm wondering if there's any, you know, research on truancy rates for students who are starting school later when both of their parents have left for school or for their jobs in other families' cases. So, and I agree with my lady back here with change and change is good and eventually change becomes the norm. But right now, I'm still really concerned about that extended day for the younger students. I think turning a seven-hour day, we expect, you know, we expect so much from those little kids. We expect them to sit in their seats for seven hours a day, time on learning, seven hours a day. We expect them to do a lot of things that aren't even developmentally appropriate for them. And it's just part of what school is now. And then you're going to extend their seven-hour day to a nine-hour day. And then some of those kids that have to do the aftercare, so their seven-hour day is turned into a nine-hour day, was turned into a 10-hour day and they're babies. Do you want to work 10 hours a day? I don't, well, as educators, we have always worked 10 hours a day. But these kids, it's just, I personally, as an educator of young children, it's too much for these. And I think it's going to affect more families than not that will have to get their kids out of the door and get them to some kind of morning care before they go to school. I do appreciate, I appreciate all the work that you guys send. I appreciate all the research that's happened. I appreciate the committee. But I do, like Santa, I think there needs to be a little bit more discussion about it, a little bit more thought about it before, I know the vote's supposed to be in January. I'm worried that if the students, Barnstable, they've been talking about this for years. They've actually hired a consultant to come in and discuss school start times. Because they've been doing the, you know, flip-flop of elementary for the high school and back and forth. But I just think there's a lot more that needs to be looked at before the decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm going to reiterate what you said. I work at the Casey Coombs School as a paraprofessional. I've been in the system for 16 years. I watch all their children fall asleep. They're losing it by 1:00, 1:30, 2:00. We're doing everything we can to keep them motivated. We are asking so much of our young children developmentally. And we really, really need to take the time to think about this. I'm all for the high school. I am. I see it. I know it. I've had children that have graduated from the system. I now have grandchildren coming into the system. And I have major concerns for our little ones and the developmental part of their day. I watch the children come into the Casey Coombs School at 7:00 in the morning and some of them are there till 5:30 at night. We have to think of our small children also. We truly do.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this?
Hello. I apologize for my appearance coming from the gym because I'm trying to multitask like most parents and single parents. I'm a single mom. I have a child in the fourth grade. I just, I have been admittedly totally out of it except for the little pamphlet I picked up at open house. So I don't know the details on the after-school, the before-school Kids Club and everything. But I just think that we just have to remind ourselves that we need to focus on what's best for the kids and what's not necessarily going to be convenient for people. I feel like there's nothing convenient about the school day, period. If we were going to make a good change that would be convenient, they'd go to school 9 to 5 and we'd all work 9 to 5. But we can't do that. You know, I've had to make career changes just so I can support my child's development and the best I can. But honestly, all I can think about, the most important thing I can think about is hearing that middle school, high school bus come by my house at 6:20 in the morning while I'm pushing the snooze button. I cannot imagine getting my daughter up that early and getting her on the bus. So I guess ideally, it would be great if we had enough buses for all the, you know, kids to start at the same time. And, you know, the elementary and high school could both start at the same time and I'm sure that's just a dream. But I just want to say that I'm really for the later start times, however you can work it out. And I think that it's great that they're offering the Kids Club to be expanded. I'm assuming it's going to be expanded because I know that's going to be hard to get into. And I don't know. I played sports in high school. I never started that early in the morning and we never lost light. And I was in the honor society and got my homework done and everything. So I think that that should be a non-issue. I think it's just, I think it's, you know, we could be trailblazing lasers and the rest of our culture will hopefully change along with us in the next few years. So I think that's all I have to say.
Just for the record, your name is?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Amy Wood.
Amy Wood. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
Good evening. Sharon DiFrancesco. I have two sons in the Mashpee school system. Both will be at the middle school next year. As I've listened this evening, I've listened at nearly every school start time meeting that there has been. And I think to dovetail on what the young lady just said, you can't make all the people happy all the time. You just can't. If you start later, the young kids will suffer. If you don't start later, the older kids are suffering. The older kids are suffering now. I'm watching my 13-year-old, who is just a delight and the easiest child probably anybody could have. In the last year, again, he's 13, I've watched him struggle to fall asleep at 8:30. Used to be 8, now, you know, shooting for 8:30. Now he's aging to 9, 9:15. He's only 13. Science tells us that time is only going to get later and later. By Friday, getting him out of bed is a miracle. I don't know if other people can attest to that with young teenagers or certainly probably older teenagers. It is difficult. So who do we cater to? We want to, we want to make the parents happy. You know, we don't want to have the little kids coming home first, so we try to have the older kids home first. But now the younger kids are having a longer day and you can see the snowball effect here. It's just, it's like you're spinning your wheels. But the reason we're all here is the science. The science behind it is indisputable, undeniable that, that window, that adolescent window, even up into the twenties, the early twenties, sleep is delayed. And when you wake a child up at 6:00 in the morning and they're 16, that's like ripping you out of bed at 4:00 in the morning every day. You want to do that? Try living with that for a month or a year or five years of your middle, high school, six years. It's awful. And I know I'm preaching to the choir. We've all done it. Push yourself, burn the candle at both ends. These kids can't help it. They can't get to sleep. And as a result, we're looking at increased car accidents once they start driving. These kids are living, literally living on coffee. I didn't start coffee till I was in college. I cringe to see somebody coming off a high school bus with a cup of coffee in their hands because they really feel they need it. They probably do. It's a, it's a difficult thing we've undertaken here. But again, it's such an important thing, so critical. Who gets the nod? The little ones? The older ones? I'm going to say the older ones because of the physiology involved. There's always 24 hours in a day. That never changes. So I would like to see this change next year. There's been so many opportunities for people to speak up. I've been flabbergasted at the lack of attendance at the meetings, truly. I didn't understand it. I still don't understand it. And I want to thank the committee for reaching out as frequently as they did. There's always, Superintendent DeBoer, there was always something on the blog about it. It has a dedicated page, the video, the research, the links, it's endless. I know it's time-consuming, but this is the future of our children. And if they don't get that critical high, those critical high school years, if they're not handled well, if they don't have an environment in which to manage those very difficult years, how are they going to, how are they going to get the best jumping off as we usher them out the door and into the world? They need this. The little kids, they'll be glad they have it when they get to high school. I know I'll be glad my kids have it. If this does not go through, I will drive my children to school because I can and I'm fortunate to be able to say that. But I will drive my children to school just to get them an extra half hour if I can't get a later start time. And looking at across the country, how this is just spreading wildly, and Massachusetts is going to take this up anyway. It's probably going to be mandated in the next couple of years. I think let's do it, rather than do it under the gun of the state, let's do this right together locally and with a good attitude to the best of our ability for these children who cannot make this decision on their own. I don't want to hear another parent say, I asked my child and they don't want it. I'm sorry. That is irresponsible and I apologize if I offend anybody. These children have no idea. They're 13 and 14. They don't even know what 18 is going to look like. They don't know. They don't know the research. If you can show me a child that's looked at the research and understands it, I'll show you a child who will all day long will beg you to make it later. So that being said, we need to make this decision for them. We are still their guardians. It is, it is our job to do what's in their best interest. You won't make everybody happy. You won't. Don't try. But we have to make the best decision under the circumstances. And I for one hope that is a later start time. I wish it were 10, but I'll, I'll, I'll take 8:30 or 9:00. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on a favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So this will be on the agenda for the January 4, 2017 meeting for a vote by the school committee to consider the proposal to change the school's start times as outlined by Superintendent DeBoer to 8:25, 9:05, 9:10. Next item on the agenda was a presentation on long-term, short-term disability by Moss and Moss. That's going to be deferred to a subsequent date. That brings us to item 8.5, substitute slash monitor pay. And we had a first read on this at the last meeting. And so this is back in front of you. Each of you have a copy of the proposal in your packet. Ms. Rohr, I don't know if you have any other comments? I believe that we can accept it. I think we can accept it in total. We'll see that there's a reason we have to do it individual. All right. Do any questions that anyone had in regard to the proposal? All right. Do, any questions that anyone had in regard to the proposal?
Can we afford to make it bigger?
I think we have to to keep it competitive. I mean, it's not a large increase. And, you know, one of the things, especially the long-term sub that's certified that's coming in from day one, we know that the person's going to be out for that period of time. I mean, I don't think it's fair for them to wait the number of days that they did before. So, yeah, I go along with the recommendation. This has been brought before me.
And you wouldn't think it needs to be higher?
Well, I mean, we can, we can entertain it down the road.
I was just curious. I mean, $80 is less than $100.
I know. And it's going to get, and what it does is, we're competing with every other school on the cake for substitutes. But I think this is a start.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the proposed changes to the compensation for substitute in elementary school recess monitors?
Teachers?
And teachers, substitute teachers. And this would be effective January 1, 2017. A motion to that effect?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, is this second read?
Second read.
So do we have to move to suspend the third read to vote on the second read? Isn't that the balancing?
This isn't a change in policy. It would be a change in policy.
Got it. I sit corrected.
Good point, Jim.
Cover the letter, yeah, cover the letter of the law. I think we should add, amend your motion to also read nurses.
Oh, and nurses.
Nurses.
I'm looking for a motion for...
All right. You want me to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, a motion to approve as presented, the elementary substitutes on recess monitors.
And nurses.
And nurses.
And nurses.
And nurses.
Second.
What an effective date of January 1, 2017. Have a motion to approve any other discussion? Hearing none. Scott?
Aye. Yes, abstaining.
Yes.
And yes. 4-4, one abstention. All right. Next item under unassigned, unfinished business, we have a update and recommendation from the superintendent's search task force.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The task force met last evening, and we'll give you the final part of it first. And that is that the task force recommended that the Mrs. DeBoer's name be forwarded to the committee with approval to be placed into the superintendent's position. That vote was by acclamation and was unanimous. There were several things that led up to that. I have some packages here for each of you. The packages include the agendas that we've had for each of the meetings, the meeting minutes. The one that is missing is the meeting minutes from last evening. We will email those to you. We voted last evening, if we do not have to have another meeting of the committee, that we will approve those by email. They're in draft form right now, but we will forward those to you. We have the meeting minutes, the interview questions. There'll be an update to that page coming. You will see that after the, each of the questions that were asked is a name. Those names were changed so that each individual had a question to ask during that portion of the period. And finally, attached here is the letter and of application and the background curriculum bytie, if you will, of the assistant superintendent, interim superintendent, I'll get these titles right yet, and her application as it was presented to the task force. A few changes that are worthy of note is that we had a request from the Cape Cod Times that they wished to be present for the interview as all of our meetings were open. We acceded to that request after a couple of emails back and forth. After doing that, and I informed the task force that this was going to happen, we had an email from one of the members who suggested and requested that the interview be closed. At that point, we stopped having de minimis cost of the luncheons for the task. And as you know, requested that you, if I have, our attorney, school attorney, look into this. Our school attorney came back and said that the interview should go forward as it was planned, as an open interview. The reporter was there last evening and was present in a few sub-paper today that has a article as to what proceeded at the meeting last evening. So what is missing from this package is a, the final meeting agenda, I'm sorry, minutes from the final meeting that we had. And also, we'll send you a change into the, who actually asked the questions. The questions were tape-recorded. If any member of the committee would like to listen to the answers to these questions, they're available at the office. If need be, we can make a, some sort of a CD or something like that where you'd be able to listen to it. We're looking to that right now if that's necessary. I would like to make a motion at this time, Mr. Chairman, to extend, let's say, the school committee's appreciation and thanks for the work and time that has been put in by the task force, and to recommend that the committee approve the recommendation of the task force.
So move.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So I'd like to specifically thank the members of...
You wanted me to read that for you?
You want to read it?
I scribbled these down for them. The members of the task force were Kathy Ford Campbell, Mrs. Kim Morris, Natania Greendeer, Kathy Lynch Nottingham, Dr. Bruce Willard, Rodney Collins, Sylvester Ryan, Paul LaBelle, John Cotton, Dr. Hope Hanscom, Mike Looney, Kathy Loyko, Chris Santos, and George Schmidt.
Thank you to each and every one of you for all the hard work and the effort that you put into this. It's a great public service that you did for this committee and for Mashpee in total. So thank you. Next item of business then, based on that, under new business is next steps in regard to appointment of superintendent. Committee needs to decide what they want to do next. I believe that there are two potential options on the table. First option would be for the committee to hold a formal interview with Mrs. DeBoer at the next meeting, which would be January 4, for purposes of asking any additional questions that members may feel are necessary in order for them to make a decision. Actually, there's three options. The third, or second option is that the committee could decide or not decide to move forward at this point and extend to Mrs. DeBoer appointment to the superintendent position and then instruct the negotiation committee to work with her in regard to coming to acceptable contract terms. And the third option, which is related to that, is if the committee so chose not to move forward with that. So I think those are the...
If I might, Mr. Chairman...
Three options?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, we just voted unanimously to accept the recommendation of the task force, which was to appoint Mrs. DeBoer to the position of superintendent. So I would like to move that Mrs. DeBoer be appointed as superintendent of the Mashpee School System.
Pending negotiations?
Pending negotiations.
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I just want to make one point. I don't think there's any questions that I could ask Mrs. DeBoer during a formal interview that would adequately, adequately present the professionalism and the poise that she's shown over two years of a very tumultuous superintendship. So with that, I agree with you.
I would also like to add, Mr. Chairman, is that the most difficult task that the committee faced, before we knew the name, there were 27 questions that were submitted as possible questions for a candidate. And once we knew who the candidate was, the best we could do was 10. And most of those came from people who were not associated with the school system and didn't really know Mrs. DeBoer that well. It was extremely difficult to come up with the questions as Kathy was sitting there. And, oh, sorry, Chris also.
Yes, I was.
My co-chair. So it was extremely difficult to come up with those questions. And I would echo what Jeff said. I don't think there's anything that I could think of to ask Mrs. DeBoer over and above the experience that we've already had with her this past year and a half.
All right.
And to that point, you know, sitting through that, through that interview yesterday and going through this whole process, yesterday with those questions that I can respect, three of you none, be impressed for that, not having the opportunity to hear those questions, but listening to the interview, listening to the responses by Mr. DeBoer on those questions, I suggest you go back and listen to it. It was, it was great to see, there were no notes. You could tell all the answers came directly from her own mind, her own heart, that those answers were not derived from some outside source, research, anything like that. It was all her words. We have the experience. We know her track record. She's been in the district for a long time now. We've seen her in the position for the last couple of years doing the job. Again, like George, I know, I go with some of the, Jeff as well. I couldn't think of anything else that I would need to know going forward, especially knowing who she is in the position and the job that she's done. Again, I respect the entire committee and this decision that the committee has to do. But that's just, you know, sitting on that committee, on that task force...